Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Mr. President.
Please rise for the Pledge and Indication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just take this time to say our thoughts and prayers are with the family of Dr. Martin Salia, who recently lost his battle with Ebola here in Omaha, and to say our thoughts and prayers are also with UNMC, their staff, their administration, certainly the Biocontainment Unit for all their doing to fight and help cure the battle for Ebola on the international stage. Thank you.
City Clerk certified publication in the Daily Record on November 14th, November 13th, Council on Regular City Council Meeting, November 18th, 2014. Current copy of the opening text is posted in white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
And Councilmember Milton has a visitor with us from Marion High School, right?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. I just want to introduce Caitlin Martin. She is a senior at Marion, and she has been here all morning. She got here first thing, and she's been shadowing and hopefully learning a little bit about public works, the city. We did a tour of the courthouse, so I would just want to welcome Caitlin here today. Wave to everybody, Caitlin.
Mr. Thompson, did you want to speak as well?
No.
Okay, I had a light on here for some reason. Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Zoning ordinance on final reading of planning board attachments. Item number five, ordinance to rezone property located southwest of 40th and Farnham Street from general commercial district to neighborhood business district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing number five is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Roll call.
Thompson, Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Mr. President.
Yes.
Passed seven to zero. Item number six, ordinance to rezone property located at 2511 North 138th Street from R3 Single Family Residential District Medium Density to R4 Single Family Residential District High Density. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing number six is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Thompson, Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is passed seven to zero. Item seven through nine are one case. Seven ordinance to amend, to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use district development agreement for West Greyhawk replat three to allow construction of several buildings containing office, commercial, fast food, and gas stations uses southwest 147th Street and West Maple Road. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Eight is resolution that the plat transmitted herewith entitled, West Greyhawk replat three is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And nine is a subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearings on items number seven, eight, and nine are today. Proponents, please. Mr. Thielen.
An EMA consulting group, 330 North 117th Street, Omaha 68154. Here on behalf of the applicant, this is the final plat, mixed-use development agreement, subdivision agreement project we brought forward earlier in the year, finalized all that up, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Thompson, Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Mr. President.
Yes.
Seven through nine are passed seven to zero. Item number 10 is resolution implementing plat entitled, Prime Business Park replat located southwest of Old Highway 64 and West Maple Road along attached conditions hereby accepted in preparation to final plat is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Douglas Threeson, 10836 Old Mill Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, here to answer any questions you may have regarding the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Good afternoon. Jim Booger, 10250 Regency Circle. I am here on behalf of Prime Real Estate, which is an existing property owner out at the project site. My client has a building there presently and may expand in the future. Because of the way that plating and zoning is on this project, we're necessarily part of the plat and part of this project, and we have been working with the developer on an agreement that will allow us to participate financially and also cooperating and granting easements back and forth and allowing the development to go forward. And I'm just here to really to make a record that my client at this point is a proponent of the project, subject to our agreement on some of these terms of the financial contribution and the easements and how the development will move forward. At this point, we are on the same page with the developer and with Developers Council, and we have the framework for an agreement in place, but I would just reserve the right that our cooperation is contingent upon that final agreement being put in place. That's all I have. I don't think that there's any other objection to anybody in the neighborhood that I'm aware of, and like I said, we are proponent of the project on those conditions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Motion approved, subject to the conditions.
Subject to which condition?
Subject to, what was your comment about? I just want to make sure that it's on the record.
Jim Booger, 10250 Regency Circle, that we agree on the terms of a development agreement and easement agreements relating to the development of the property.
Okay. Motion to approve, subject to those agreements.
So, Mr. Clerk, that'd be a typical motion in terms of what gets accomplished, or is that a different implication?
Well, let's ask the planning department. I don't know sure that can be put on the preliminary plat.
The Day Fanslaw City Planning, the department recommended approval of the preliminary plat, subject to six or seven conditions on that plat. We weren't party to, Mr. Booger, we have had communications about that, but it's not in our official recommendation report.
Okay. And then we'll come back for a final plat.
It will.
Motion approved.
Okay. Straight motion to approve in a second. Roll call.
Thompson, Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item number 11, resolution special use application to allow small group living, non-disabled in an R4 35 Single Family Residential District High Density located at 5123 Pinney Street is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 11 is today. Are there any proponents?
We are not.
Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Thompson, Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Liquor. Item number 11.
Number 12, right?
Number 12, I'm sorry. Corkscrew, 3908 Farnham Street, Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on number 12 is today. Proponents, please.
My name is Corey Keith, 2004 South 108 Second Circle, Moonee, Nebraska. I'm a partner in the project. We're just here to answer any questions, should you have any.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Thompson, Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Mr. President.
Yes.
12 is adopted seven to zero. Item number 13. The Crossbones Bar, 5611 South 36th Street, Class C liquor license, new application, no location.
Public hearing on number 13 is today. Proponents, please.
My name is Michael Ivers. I'm the owner, 4914 Pinney Street, Omaha 68104.
Thank you.
Here to answer any questions.
All right. Any other proponents, please? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Thompson, Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Item number 14. Chart Wells, 7000 Mercy Road, Class I liquor license, new application, new location is for Mercy Hall and Nixon Lead Hilmer Art Gallery Building on College of St. Mary's Campus.
Public hearing on number 14 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Timonio. I'm with Harding &amp; Schultz, and that's 121 South 13th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. Here on behalf of the applicant, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Thompson, Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Mr. President.
Yes.
14 is adopted seven to zero. Item number 15, Ingredient Restaurant, 3201 Farnham Street, Suites 6101, catering liquor license, no application, no location, and present hold a Class C liquor license.
Public hearing on number 15 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Thompson, Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Mr. President.
Yes.
15 is adopted seven to zero. Item number 16, Field Club of Omaha, 3615 Woolworth Avenue, request permission to appoint Chris Bancroft, manager of the present Class C liquor license.
Public hearing on number 16 is today. Proponents, please.
Eric Holstein, 3615 Woolworth Avenue. I'm here on behalf of the applicant to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Thompson, Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council, because I am placed on consent agenda to be removed, items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by City Council Rules of Order.
Public hearings on agenda items number 17 through 21 were held on November 4th.
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Thompson, Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Mr. President.
Yes.
17 through 21 are passed seven to zero. We're going to remove item number 49 from the consent agenda.
Public hearings on agenda items number 22 through 48 and 50 through 51 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come with a microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. See none, public hearings are closed.
Motion approved.
Mr. Gernat, do you have a light on?
Yes, I do.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize, it was not the one that I wanted to talk about, just disregarded light. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second on 22 through 48 and 50 through 51. Roll call.
Thompson, Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Mr. President.
Yes.
They're all adopted, seven to zero. Now, item 49 is residents appointment of the mayor of Daniel Teckley as a union shop journeyman, electrician, member of the electrical examiner's board. We had a request to withdraw, then a request to withdraw, the withdrawal, I understand. Three weeks.
Three weeks.
Three weeks.
Second.
And continue the public hearing?
Yes.
Question in a second, Ms. Milton.
Thank you. I'm just curious as to why we're taking this off, because I know that the mayor put this on the agenda, and the mayor never asked to take it back off. We have 10 appointments on this current agenda that the mayor put on here, and so I'm just curious as to why we're taking it back off or laying this particular one over.
There's opposition to this appointment that in light of the motion to withdraw was told they need not appear today, and so it wouldn't be fair to the opponents or the opponent to have a public hearing. And then another thing was that the, it would allow the opportunity between the opposition and the mayor to meet should they wish, and thirdly, it wouldn't ruin our appetite going into the Thanksgiving holiday.
I can understand that. I'm just curious procedurally, because when the mayor puts something on the agenda, like an appointment, and I guess I'm just confused as to who had the motion to withdraw put on there in the first place? Because I never received any kind of email or correspondence or anything in regards to that. I was told that City Council members were sent an email. I never received one.
Well, I think that what we just heard from the clerk was there was a communication withdrawing the withdrawal, so that would imply that there was a withdrawal. But in pre-council, Jim Douding, our chief of staff, explained that he had received a withdrawal. So, not just what Jim told us at pre-council, but what the nominee then issued in his withdrawal of his withdrawal, which I'm told there's an email to that effect. I haven't seen it. I didn't have time after lunch to look at my emails.
Okay, yeah, I didn't receive, so I didn't know where the initial withdrawal came from. I just knew it didn't come from the mayor, so.
I think the confusion came from the individual being appointed, appearing to request he did not want to be appointed, but there's been confusion on this for, I guess, a few days, and so it seems to me it makes sense to lay it over and clarify that confusion. Mr. Thompson.
It doesn't show that my button's working on this end, but you see it, so thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to go ahead and not support the layover because I support the candidate. I looked over his qualifications, and I kind of think he would fit the board well, and so my vote is to just go ahead and vote him in, and I trust the mayor on this particular thing, and I also trust my ability to assess that he's a good candidate.
Thank you. No further lights. There's a motion and a second for a three-week layover?
Yes.
Roll call.
Thompson, Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Mr. President.
Yes.
It's laid over three weeks, five to two. Item number 52, resolution, the final offer attached is Exhibit A. This resolution is the city of Omaha's final offer to the Professional Firefighters Association of Omaha Local 385 for the calendar years 2015, 16, and 17, for the wages, employee benefits, and overall compensation practices for the members of the Professional Firefighters Association of Omaha Local 385 is hereby approved.
Public hearings continue today. Are there any proponents? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Motion approved.
Second.
I think we're at a point where this should be approved today. This is a procedural filing, I think we all know, and talked about last time, that if there is no deal, no agreement by the end of the year, is something that should be done to keep our place, hold our place before the Commission of Industrial Relations if that's needed, and hopefully it's not, but I think under any circumstance at this point, even if there was a tentative agreement produced, there is no agreement by the end of the year, just given, you know, timelines through personnel board and City Councils and all that entails. But I think the only reason, and the confusion on this one initially was that some of us felt the resolution submitted wasn't reflective of our understanding of where negotiations had been or the current status of where they were, particularly as it pertained to pension, the pension discussion. But regardless of that, this does appear to be a procedural thing we need to pursue at this point, even if that made some of us uncomfortable at that juncture. So, having said that, I think there's some other lights. Mr. Jerem.
Just so you know, our light request buttons are not working from our end, so you may be able to see that we won't, but we can't tell whether, just go along with what you were saying, Dr. Thompson.
Maybe we should raise our hand or something.
Yeah, I would just want to echo in what Council President said, is that the best I can understand this is that this is a ceremonial, last, best, final offer, and in many respects does not reflect the actual state of negotiations between the city and Local 385, that I'm told that those talks will continue, and they're in fact scheduled to continue, but this preserves the city's ability to, in the absence of an agreement, to preserve these issues. But that, so any of my constituents that will be asking me for feedback on this, all I can tell you is that if there is a tentative agreement that is ever achieved, do not be surprised that terms and conditions that are in here would not then be reflected in that tentative agreement. So if you have hopes or expectations that are elevated in certain areas of what's reflected in this document on agenda, I just want you to, from my perspective, not get your hopes up for those things, because they may not even be things that are being discussed at the table right now or being sought by the city or the Local 385. So, for that, and because our labor lawyers are telling us this is a procedural thing that needs to be done, and it preserves their ability to bargain, hopefully that will continue, I just want to have that clarification so that there weren't any undue expectations.
Thank you. I think Mr. Gray's light is on.
Yeah, and for my constituents, the same thing. I just wanted to say ditto to my colleagues, both to my left and right here. This is a procedural move. It does not necessarily reflect what the contract is going to look like at the end, should there be a contract, and hopefully there will. This is just to, this is a placeholder kind of, of a resolution that preserves our place, and so for my constituents as well, we need to be, you know, don't be looking for everything that you see here to actually be in the contract. So, just to echo both what Councilmember Jerem and Councilmember Vestasen talked about earlier. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And no further lights, right?
Yes.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Thompson, Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, settled at zero. Present, City Council Rule 7, agenda item number 53 through 54 shall be laid over three weeks for publication in public hearing. Salvage dealer's business, item number 55, resolution, the application to establish a salvage dealer's business at 2728 North 85th Street is hereby approved. A permits inspections is directed to the permits.
Public hearing on number 55 is today. Are there any proponents? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Second.
Roll call.
Thompson, Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero. Appeal rate bid rejection, item number 56, Visco Electrical Products Company appeals the rejection of their bid of September 17th for a string of pearls LED retrofit and replacement globe kit project.
Public hearing on number 56 is today. Are there any proponents? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Motion to deny appeal.
Roll call.
Thompson, Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Mr. President.
Yes.
The appeal is denied, seven to zero. Now, item 57, resolution authorizing a purchase order to Kits Davis Company for the purchase of the LED retrofit and replacement globe kits.
Public hearing on number 57 is today. Are there any proponents? See none, any opponents?
Motion approved.
Second.
Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Thompson, Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Mr. President.
Yes.
57 is adopted, seven to zero. Resolutions, ready legislative package, item 58, resolution that requests the Council President and administration, the legislative package of City Omaha shall include support for legislation if introduced to make the conviction of a crime for using a facsimile gun carry the same penalty as if using a real gun.
Public hearing on number 58 is today. Are there any proponents? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. I'll just have a few comments on this, like we discussed this morning. And in general, as we talk about this legislative package overall, these next several items, I know we talked about this morning, that we had 13 introductions and seven support, and when we're trying to prioritize things for our city lobbyists, sometimes it's better to have fewer priorities, because if you have too many priorities, you have no priorities, right? In the mind of the state legislature, and so hopefully, we may have made some progress on that since then, as we go through these items, but I think definitely the most important, some of the most important ones on here deal with public safety that I know we're all interested in, and this first one falls in that category, and was introduced by Senator Burkhart in previous sessions, and I know it's his intention to introduce again, so we'd like to show support for what he's trying to accomplish here, particularly given a stark and tragic, stark and tragic example of, or I should say, a stark and tragic event that happened in our community with the Wendy's shootings since then, that did involve what's called a facsimile weapon, in that case, an airsoft gun, whereby officers responding have to decide how they're responding in a split second, and can't distinguish between what's been a real gun or a weapon that appears like a gun, such as an airsoft gun. So what this proposes to do is to make the committing of a crime with an airsoft gun or a facsimile weapon also a Class III felony, just like it would be if using a regular gun, and in that respect, hopefully have some preventative implications, but then also have certainly an enforcement component to what that means. I think the message is important, that it should be treated the same as a real weapon if used in a crime, and that's what this would do by making it a Class III felony. We had some discussion in this morning's session about making it a different level of felony, but I think I've thought about it since then, and I did talk to the senator who intends to introduce it, and I think it's important we maintain that message that using a gun like this should have the same kind of implications as using a real gun in a crime, therefore a Class III felony, and it's his intention to introduce the bill that way, and it's his preference that we stick to that if we approve this today as well, so I wanted to report back on that, too. With that, Mr. Thompson.
Yes, I have split allegiances to this particular legislative amendment. If we don't do anything at all, then that's bad. That's not good, because we need to do something. It needs to be a felony, so voting no on it doesn't make sense, because I'm not soft on crime, so I will vote yes on it. However, I want the record to show that I have a qualified yes. I would like the sponsoring senator and the committee that he's part of to at least have the discussion that perhaps there should be a Class IV or Class III-A. I believe intent should be a part of what we're taking a look at, and I do think having a real gun versus a fake gun, that there is a somewhat level of difference of intent. But like I said previously, if I vote no, then that's not what I want either, because something does need to be done, so my vote will be a yes, but I would like the record to show that I'm encouraging the sponsor and the committee to at least discuss further, making the offense not quite Class III, but perhaps III-A or IV. With that, I will support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gernat.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will be supporting 58 as well. I would just like to say, 58 through 78, the process that we're going to be going through, we made a promise a long time ago, I remember, I think Dr. Thompson will remember this, when we were first told by the legislature, that as you had mentioned, if we don't send anything at all, if we don't do anything at all, or if we send a whole bunch, we might wind up with nothing at all. I think what we'll be going through here this afternoon, this process, we're doing our best to cut our package down to be effective, so when we do reach those points of committee meetings and public hearings down in Lincoln, we can be effective and come back as a winner, not just in the terms of a W or an L, but for what we're doing for our city. Our city will be a winner. Our city will be better off. So I'm hoping that some of our legislators are watching today, and that they get the message that we're doing our part to make sure that you get an effective package, and what we do send down to you will be able to back up. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. There's a motion and a second, I believe, right?
Yes.
Okay. Need a motion?
Motion approved.
Second. Roll call.
Thompson, Gernat, Gray, Jerem, Milton, Pauls, Mr. President.
Yes.
50 is adopted, seven to zero. Item 59, resolution.
You know, it is a budget issue, and so it's important. It's important because the converse, at least the criticism, could be the cash flow isn't there to always front these monies and then try to get it on the backside. But I believe in light of the fact that the state aid to cities has dried up and a lot of other things, that this is an important bone that the state needs to throw to the cities. So this would help us balance our budget, our books. It would take some of the guesswork out. It's a way that the state can be a partner with the city. I think it should be one of the priorities. And I know a lot of these, we can say that, too, and, you know, those priorities kind of get many, plentiful, but at the same time, I just think this is an important one. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
59 is adopted, seven to zero. Item Number 60, Resolution that the legislative package shall include support for legislation if introduced to require the withholding of insurance proceeds until a property owner's demolition and cleanup at a fire damaged property.
Public hearing number 60 is today. Are there any proponents? See none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gray?
Thank you, Mr. President. And let me also thank councilmembers Franklin Thompson and Gary Gurnett for joining in with me in this legislation. As you know, we tear down a number of properties every year. Those numbers, we have more properties that need to be torn down than we do have dollars to tear down others. And in most instances, we don't get the dollars back that the city spends in tearing down these properties. This, in my judgment, in our judgment, quite frankly, is a way, it will not harm anybody that wants to rebuild a home that catches fire, but if it does catch fire, this is an opportunity for the city to recoup some of the resources necessary to tear that house down by placing a lien on the insurance policy. It will not hurt those owners who plan to rebuild or plan to repair, but it will aid the city in not only not having to tear down a property with limited resources, but it also will give us the opportunity to gain some of those resources back if we pass this. So I would be, I'm supportive of this legislation and would like to see it move forward, and I make a motion to approve.
Second. Thank you. No further lights. Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero. Item Number 61, Resolution that the legislative package shall include support for legislation if introduced to require financial institutions to provide a name, address, and phone number of a responsible bank employee to take and administer weed and litter complaints on foreclosed properties.
Public hearing number 61 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gray?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this goes to housing issues that we have or housing concerns that we have. This will, and I'll give you an example, we were, I presented to this council several months ago, a property that was in serious need of repair and the foliage and so forth that had overgrown that area was so extensive that, you know, I think most of us couldn't believe our eyes as to how bad it was. We called who we thought was the owner just to find out that one of the banks actually is the owner of the property. And so this legislation, we see going forward as a way to make sure that we at least have somebody on record when the city goes out and does and has to do litter and weed abatement on properties where it's not being done. Now, we at least, in this particular instance, have someone to call and make sure that the city at least gets reimbursed for some of the work that we do when we have to go in to bait properties for weeds and litter and those sorts of things. We had agreed later on on the agenda, there was another item that the three of us, councilmembers Thompson and Gurnett and I, I think we're going to withdraw that one because we think this one will have a better chance of passage, first of all, since it made it out of committee once. And secondly, it will go a long way towards what we want to do with this other resolution later on on the agenda. So I'm asking the support of my colleagues on this, and I make a motion to approve.
Second. Thank you. Mr. Gurnett?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo just a little bit farther on what my colleague, Mr. Gray, has said. Our constituents hold us accountable for things that, in our quality of life, that they expect us to guard and to cherish as well. I think property owners that are, and financial institutions, they need to be accountable as well. And if we have a tool on the books that helps that along, I would think that our constituents would be saying, yeah, go for it. Let's make sure that we've got a proper wrench with sockets that fit and get the job done. So yes, I would be in support of this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Yes, this is one of the pieces of the package that it's, if it's introduced, then show support for. It's not necessarily one of the top priorities, but it is a top priority in that it really solves a problem. And I like to go on record as saying that we checked with code enforcement, city officials, and they see this as a piece that will help make their job much easier. So it isn't just the planning department or just Councilman Gray, but a lot of people putting their heads together saying that this is probably a good compromise to make problem solving a little bit easier. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero. Item Number 62, Resolution, The Legislative Package Shall Include Proposal to Require Pre-Owned Motor Vehicles Dealerships to Provide a 90-Day Warranty on Every Used Vehicle They Sell.
Public hearing number 62 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gray?
I make a motion to withdraw this. First of all, I'm withdrawing it, not because I don't think it's important, because I think it's extremely important that we do this, but I think there's a better way of going at it. And my learned colleague, former state senator, has given me some ideas on how we better do this. So I want to take the opportunity to withdraw 62 at this point, not because it's not important, but because I think there's a better way of going at it.
Thank you. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's withdrawn, seven to zero. Item Number 63, Resolution, The Legislative Package Shall Include Support for Legislation If Introduced to Increase the Amount of State Funds for Tourism Promotion in the State.
Public hearing number 63 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not going to speak to this other than saying, if you've read the World Herald lately, you can see the ramifications of a tourist trade for the city and the tourist dollars that come. So I think it's something to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
I support it also. In order to make money, you have to spend a little bit of money. And we can't forget what we started about, we started this about 16, 18 years ago. We wanted to compete with Des Moines, wanted to compete with Minneapolis and Denver and Kansas City. And just like, you know, we have to have something, some kind of recruiting tool. So I think this is money that is spent wisely, and the more we make Omaha a place of destination, the better everybody can make out. A rising boat or a rising tide helps all boats. And so I think this is wise legislation. I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. Is there a motion?
He had the motion in a second.
Okay. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's withdrawn, seven to zero. Item Number 63, Resolution, The Legislative Package Shall Include Support for Legislation If Introduced to Increase the Amount of State Funds for Tourism Promotion in the State.
Public hearing number 63 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not going to speak to this other than saying, if you've read the World Herald lately, you can see the ramifications of a tourist trade for the city and the tourist dollars that come. So I think it's something to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
I support it also. In order to make money, you have to spend a little bit of money. And we can't forget what we started about, we started this about 16, 18 years ago. We wanted to compete with Des Moines, wanted to compete with Minneapolis and Denver and Kansas City. And just like, you know, we have to have something, some kind of recruiting tool. So I think this is money that is spent wisely, and the more we make Omaha a place of destination, the better everybody can make out. A rising boat or a rising tide helps all boats. And so I think this is wise legislation. I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. Is there a motion?
He had the motion in a second.
Okay. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's withdrawn, seven to zero. Item Number 63, Resolution, The Legislative Package Shall Include Support for Legislation If Introduced to Increase the Amount of State Funds for Tourism Promotion in the State.
Public hearing number 63 is today. Are there any proponents? See none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Ms. Milton?
Yes, thank you. And what I want to say here is I just want to clarify something, especially for those watching. I'm not asking that our elections necessarily be changed, but as most of you know, we had a city charter convention last year. And as a result of that city charter convention, the majority of the people at that convention had voted that they wanted to see our charter changed to have city elections in even numbered years. They, I'm, from the people that I spoke to, it's to save money. Each election costs about $350,000 to have our mayoral and city council elections. Currently, the Nebraska state statute mandates that city elections for our city be held in odd numbered years. So all I'm asking is that we ask the legislature to at least change the statute to allow the citizens of Omaha to determine when their elections are held. Right now, even if we were to put that charter amendment on the ballot with, like we did with the other charter amendments just a couple of weeks ago, if the citizens of Omaha would have voted potentially to change the charter to have our elections in even numbered years, then the city would be in violation of the state statute. So at this point, all I'm asking is that the state statute allow it and then allow the citizens of Omaha to vote upon whether or not they want this. Just to give, it really just gives us the option to do that as opposed to have it mandated by the state.
Thank you. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, Mike? My constituents have told me they like the short election cycle afforded by the city's current process of an April primary and a May election. And they like the fact that it's dedicated to the sole purpose of the city offices and city ballot issues that are often on the ballot at that time. With regard to the cost, there's no anecdotal evidence that I've seen from the election commissioner that any of our ballot costs have decreased, even when we were told that reducing the number of precincts where people would vote would cut down on our cost. So I'm not persuaded at this point that, in fact, our costs will be reduced. And in fact, the costs to run for office, I think, would be dramatically increased to those people in our constituency that may want to run for office because if you have an election that would mirror the even numbered years, those are much longer processes with a May primary, a November election, campaigns that usually start 11 or 12 months before, with never-ending door knocking, fundraising, TV ads that our constituents, at least my constituents, tell me they've grown extremely weary of. And then to the candidate themselves, it could create a bar to someone who maybe doesn't have the economic means or connections to raise funds to be actually able to participate in the city's democracy and democratic process. And finally, I would say that in terms of the city's elections, there was some discussion among the charter committee, there's a perception that somehow it would increase the turnout or participation of those who were voting, when in fact, the opposite evidence had been presented during the commission by the minority that showed an election where actually the city's turnout was higher than the most recent even numbered years turnout. So at least in my district, my constituents tell me they like the process the way it is, So at least in my district, my constituents tell me they like the process the way it is, and they like the fact that the politicians are not at their doorsteps for a whole year, but in a, from April to May, that the advertising is condensed, and they don't have to get the fatigue and the calls and the TV ads and the mailings and the, that happen. Because as so many times happens in those processes, there's these mailings that come that, let's just say, not always reflect the true positions of candidates and they, these elections, there's a reason why the voters grow weary, and that is because the process goes so long, that there's these negative ads that come out that aren't necessarily truthful, and they're very expensive, and people who don't have that kind of money or access to that money don't have the ability or means to respond to them. So at least in District Three, people tell me they like the system the way it is.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. In District Two, the words are pretty much the same in terms of the condensed election, the amount of time you spend campaigning is much shorter, the number of materials that people get to their homes is significantly less because of the shorter period of time, just a whole myriad of things. But I've talked to people also outside the district that feel the same way, and have even asked me the question, why are we, you know, why do we want to change the election and change our election cycle? And, you know, I'm not really interested in that, but neither are most of the people in my district. So they like it the way it is, too. And I think the other thing, when you talk about dollars and resources, I think city races, if they were in an even year, would end up getting lost in terms of raising some of the resources necessary to compete and compete fairly in a city election with those who have significantly more resources. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Yes, I like the system the way it is. There are a lot of advantages, but those advantages are for me. And if it ever got on the ballot, I, my personal vote would be to leave it as it is. It's not broken, don't fix it. However, I'm a big proponent of letting people have a say. And on many several issues other than this one, I've advocated for putting things on the ballot. So to stay consistent with my overall beliefs of participatory democracy, I'm going to support this and say yes. But if it did come to me personally, and I walked in the ballot box, I would vote no for it. So, but I'm going to support now because of my belief in more participation. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights? Is there a motion?
Oh, sorry.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
No.
Gray?
No.
Jerem?
No.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
No.
The motion fails on a four to three, or three to four vote. Item sixty-five. Resolution that the legislative package shall include proposal to establish a process for mediation and/or arbitration of disputes between governmental subdivisions that require political subdivisions with disputes with at least one other subdivision to mediate, arbitrate, rather than litigate, or at least before litigation.
Public hearing number sixty-five is today. Are there any proponents? See none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, this proposal comes about as a result of the recent encounter that the city had at one of our sessions where the, there was a dispute that was revealed that goes on between the city, Metro Calton Community College, an adjoining property owner, and the metro bus system. And it seemed to me to be a real head-scratcher when one of the political subdivisions, the Community College Board, refused to participate in mediation, essentially saying to us that they'd rather go into a litigation and expend the taxpayers' dollars to have the battle there, rather than to do what may be in the best financial interests of those who pay the bills to keep the institutions like theirs and ours going, and it's the taxpayers, to go through an alternate dispute resolution process. Because the ADR process, as it's referred to, has, I believe, over eighty-five percent success rate locally, some mediators over ninety percent success rate in resolving disputes without the necessity of trials. So I just saw this as an opportunity to ask the legislature to establish a process where if there is a dispute between political subdivisions, that it be required that they go through this process, because it can save the taxpayers such significant amount of money, rather than pay lawyers and expert witnesses and have battles that go on for years in the court system. It seemed like a wise thing to do. So with that, I would move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
First of all, I want to second the motion. And I, too, this was a head-scratcher for me, too. I, I'm not sure still what went on a couple of weeks ago, but this is wise, and it helps government be more efficient. And anything that we can do to increase that efficiency, I think we should push for. Thank you, Councilman Jerem, for having the insight to go ahead and include this round. Appreciate it, and I support it. I second it. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights? There's a motion in a second. Uh, Mr. Pauls?
My light is off.
Yours must be the only one not working.
No, we can't. Okay, wait, wait. Let me, may I?
Yeah, please.
Okay, thank you. You know, as I read this, of course, I totally agree with the concept. So I want us to enlarge on this concept, not to say that we need mediation, but a while back, on number forty-nine, we said we need to lay it over because we need people on both sides that listen to each other and talk to each other. I know it's not mediation, but it's getting added into talk. So I think that is a, something to think about. And also, I'm going to challenge our president that next week, one of the items you have on the agenda, I want to have some mediation done. Afterwards, before, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm treating everybody the same, the mayor, and the president. Not saying mediation, but listen to all sides. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see if that light still works.
I didn't push it.
No further lights, I believe, on this issue. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number sixty-six. Resolution that the legislative package shall include support for legislation if introduced to allow the transportation network companies to operate within the state and the city of Omaha and to be regulated by the Public Services Commission.
Public hearing number sixty-six is today. Are there any proponents? See none any opponents. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, this comes about as a result of a widely-publicized dispute that emerged this, earlier this spring, when the transport network, rideshare companies, Uber and Lyft, introduced their network and platform in Nebraska. And since then, there's been a dispute that carried over into an interim hearing this summer before the Transportation Committee of the Legislature, as to whether these people participating as drivers within the transportation network ridesharing platform and the riders actually are something that is part of the existing regulations, or should be a part of the regulations, as common carriers or private contract carriers for hire within the Public Service Commission of Nebraska. So the gist of what I read in that interim committee report was that there's genuine dispute as to whether they're covered or not, because it's an emerging technology that didn't exist before, that has a platform, that's really a closed network of people that for a while weren't even charged, it was a voluntary donation system. And so in working with the representative locally for these transportation network companies, as well as Senator Mello, who I'm told intends to offer legislation in this regard, it was my thought that we could support that, given that the largest metropolitan areas of the city, namely Omaha and Lincoln, are where the, primarily these transportation network companies are operating presently. So I'd ask your support. Move to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
If Mr. Chalua would come up, please.
Second.
Jack Chalua, city lobbyist.
In general, Mr. Chalua, Jack, and you and I have been at this for a long time. Ideally, what, what number is an optimal number of things to take down to Lincoln?
Well, this will be the long session. Twenty fifteen will have ninety working days, so all bills will be new. And if they don't pass in twenty fifteen, they could be carried over to twenty sixteen. A good ballpark number of bills to introduce typically is anywhere between five and nine, if you will. That's what traditionally we've carried down. However, on this one, since we know someone is most likely going to introduce your resolution on this one, just says support if introduced. So just to let, you know, this is a more manageable resolution.
This is a manageable one, and it's one that will get introduced and probably not have a whole lot of resistance?
Well, I think there may be some resistance from other industries that provide rights for fees, if you will, but in terms of being a municipal issue, there's going to be a bill introduced, and I think the legislature will address it one way or the other, so.
Okay, we've, we're going to kick some of these, sixty-two to next year. And, and Mr. Gray talked about sixty-seven being dropped. And so that's down to eighteen items that were to, are you okay with taking that much down?
Well, I believe so. There's still some more that call for introduction. It looks like we have thirteen that we started with saying introduce. Two of them, as of the next item, will be withdrawn, so we're down to eleven. And, and I apologize, it looks like number sixty-four did not pass, so now we're down to ten.
Okay.
So it looks like we're getting closer to a very good manageable number.
You feel a little bit better than you did this morning?
I feel better. The load is lighter.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Jerem, originally, I was going to suggest that perhaps this is one that we also push to next year, but in light of what Jack has just said, then maybe this is one we can sneak in there. So I'm willing to support it.
Thank you. I would agree with that as well. This is a support if introduced, and we think it will be introduced anyway. It just recognizes Uber and Lyft are in our market now. Let's move to the, to the, let's shift to the notion of welcoming them here in this market, but get them under our regulatory guidelines as maybe they should be. So there's a motion in a second. No further lights? Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted seven to zero. Item number sixty-seven. Resolution that legislative package shall include a proposal to close a loophole in banking laws whereby a lender would be required to record their name and registration, on registration deeds when foreclosure is perfected on a property.
Public hearing number sixty-seven is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gurnat?
Thank you, Mr. President. As chairman of the council planning committee, at our monthly meetings, there are some times that certain items will grab onto the entire committee's radar. There was something said, not forcefully, but sort of in a light breath, if you will, that all of us sort of, our radar beacons went up, and, which brought forward this particular piece of legislation. And of course, as our constituents want, we are continual dialogue amongst ourselves, our staff, and our worker bees out in the field, we have to sometimes bite the bullet, if you will. So just with that said, Jay, would you?
Jay Davis, Assistant Planning Director.
One of the things that was said at our last planning board meeting, a planning committee meeting, was more times than you like, that you run up against a stone wall when you know that there is a piece of property that is now basically under control, or under the watchful eye at least, of a banking institution. Is that accurate to say?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. But for some reason, their name isn't anywhere officially to allow code enforcement to officially go after them to take care of the discrepancies on a piece of property. Is that accurate?
That is correct. What we run into now is that banks will take a property back in foreclosure, whether somebody walks away from it or takes it back in foreclosure. There's a loophole right now that allows them to keep that property out of their name for a number of years. And what that does for us in the code enforcement side is, we can't go after somebody in particular when a property goes into disrepair or into a condition which warrants us to start moving forward. To be very honest with you, I've had time to reflect since we talked earlier, and this would be my favorite bill if we could get one to go through, but I'm afraid that this one's not going to work for us. So if we have sixty and sixty-one in play, at least I'm getting somewhere. I would, like, don't get me wrong, I would love to have this in our toolbox, but I'm afraid even talking to Jack, that it's just not going to go. The banking association's not going to go for this. The other two, I feel we probably have a better chance and give us a good head start to moving down the road that we need to get to, to get some of these properties taken care of for us.
Well, I, and I would agree. We have something that is positive, and we're not going to get immediately shot out of the saddle if this was, was brought up, and we have some positive baby steps moving along with getting tools in that toolbox.
Yes.
Okay, I, I can go along with that. But I want the record to reflect that I'm not afraid to take on an industry. I don't think my colleagues on the planning committee are afraid to take on an industry. But for the benefit of our, our package, and what our lobbyist has to do, and the experience and the institutional knowledge that our lobbyist has, and I think the, we could probably go far saying the track record, when things like this even get close to a particular industry.
Yes.
That all of a sudden, emails go, the phone calls go, everything lights up like a slot machine. And just for myself, I think we want the record to reflect, I'm not afraid to take an industry off, whoever it is. But I'm also reasonable enough to know that we've got a lot of other moving parts. And if we're, if we want to have a good ignition system, then we better make sure that we continue towards making those types of things happen. So I'd make a motion to withdraw item sixty-seven.
Second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Although we're going to draw, Jack and I, have you come to forth?
Jack Chalua, city lobbyist.
Okay. If we were going to approach this, what would be the best direction to go? I mean, I know if you bring, having chaired the banking committee, I know this would be dead on arrival. But what is, do we need to do ahead of time? Do we need to talk to a group of banking lobbyists? Because this will, I mean, this will set them on fire.
You're absolutely correct. As former chair, you understand the banking industry. If, and most likely than not, this bill would probably be referenced to the Banking, Commerce, and Insurance Committee, which is their home turf, if you will. And a lot of senators are somewhat sympathetic to their concerns, and it just would be such an uphill battle. Plus, it, when you start talking about foreclosure law, it really becomes highly specific, and there's certain, you know, timelines relative to notice requirements that you have to give to, you know, the lendee or the mortgagie, if you will. And then there's other notice requirements as you move forward relative to delinquent taxes, and at what point, you know, who becomes responsible for what items with the property. And then likewise, every time you file a deed and register it, there's also fees and implications on, on the deeds themselves, if you will. And so there would be such a multitude of directions that this bill would go, that they would confuse and obfuscate the committee that, you know, in the end, senators, I mean, not that we couldn't do a good job explaining our case, but they would just throw their hands up and say, gee, I don't, I don't know what to do to help you. Maybe we can move forward with those other two resolutions you have. I know there's been some commitment by the banking industry on the bill introduced last time to at least have them step forward and provide a name and address and a phone number of someone. So, so a lot of it has to do with cooperation.
Right. But is there anything we can do without even going the legislative route? I mean, with lobbyists, or you think they, they know they could stop this?
Well...
Because I'm trying, when I hear this is almost like a plum to somebody who works for the city, this is like the thing that he would like to have. I mean, I think that's sending a strong message.
Absolutely. And, and I'm sympathetic, and I work with Jay a lot, and he testifies readily for us down at the legislature. I really think if we do have some contact people, and if they are reliable, at least we can, you know, go to them and put the squeeze on them, say, you need to be responsible for the property, under your control now.
Well, isn't Richard Byer, isn't he the new person in charge of the bankers?
Oh, yes, exactly.
Well, and he's been in this mix before, not as a banker, but, you know, economic development.
Absolutely.
So use your...
He's our guy, and I'll bring you in as former chair of the committee for the legislature, and we'll, we'll take him the task.
Right, okay. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second to withdraw. Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's withdrawn seven to zero. Item number sixty-eight. Resolution that the legislative package shall include support for legislation if introduced of a bill to renew state aid to cities.
Public hearing number sixty-eight is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. Even this may be, even though this may be wishful thinking, and we don't have a snowball's chance in the other place, I don't know, but this is major. And I was on council when we had, Gary, you were on council, when we had state aid to cities. And boy, do we miss it. But I'm going to support this one, even though it's an uphill climb. I just think it's important to keep pushing this button. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights? Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Adopted seven to zero. Sixty-nine. Resolution that legislative package shall include a proposal to change the distance used to calculate the turnback of state sales tax to a consistent length for all approved projects.
Public hearing number sixty-nine is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion in a second. Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Placed on file seven to zero. Item number seventy. Resolution that legislative package shall include a proposal to require good time to be earned only time to be earned only after inmate successfully completes required programs while in prison to prevent recidivism.
Public hearing number 70 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Ms. Milton.
Thank you. And I'll be quick on this one because I think most of us have talked about this, good time and reform to the good time law for quite a while over the last few months. But I do think that it's important that we do have some reforms to our sentencings and then how the good time is calculated. I think some of the problems that, or that there may be with, I guess, having earned good time, so to speak, that I've heard of is, if the programs aren't available to the people, then they may not be able to earn the good time, even if they want to. And I think that there is an answer to that. So when we hear about that, we just need to make sure that there are waiting lists and that we do continue to try and make those programs available, and that that shouldn't affect it. But we absolutely need to do something here so that we don't have people with multiple felonies getting out after serving less than half their time. And so hopefully, we will see some good reforms to this law in the next, with the next legislature. So I would ask for your support, and I think we can let some of the details be hashed out down in Lincoln.
Thank you. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I do intend to support this, but I do want to warn us. First of all, if we start tampering with good time in a significant way, the next thing we need to decide is how many jails we want to build. Because we are going to build them if we tweak this to the extent that more people are staying in for longer periods of time, and we already have heard the stories about the prison overcrowding that exists already. Secondly, the majority of people who are incarcerated are incarcerated for less than five years. It takes about two and a half years to get, even to get into one of these programs, even if they could. The majority of them have been on waiting lists, and they get out of prison before they have a chance to go through any of these programs. And so, and that's going to take dollars if we want to, if we want to increase the number of participants in some of the programs necessary, the drug program, the job training, the reading program, some of the other things that were in existence in the past that were cut from the budget. If we're going to put those back in, there's going to be a price tag with those, and I'm not opposed to that price tag and making sure that we kind of cut down on the recidivism if we can. But the fact of the matter is, is that I don't have to tell two lawyers here that the majority of people are in jail for less than five years and don't even get to qualify for some of these programs in the first place because they won't have enough time. So we'll have to, we'll have to increase the number of programs that we have, which is going to have a dollar total to it. And if we tweak the good time law in a more significant way, then I think we're going to have to determine how many jails we want to build. But I will support this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
I just have a question. It says we are going to introduce, and you know there's been a number of hearings on 70 and 71 already, so are we giving Jack the option to introduce or support? How are you going to approach that, Jack?
Jack Chaloha, City Lobbyist. As Councilmember Milton and the administration have discussed, in harmony with our police chief, we have some certain ideas relative to good time, and then also the next item on your agenda regarding supervised release. We've asked law department to draft bills, so we will have specific language that we would like included, whether the Chair of Judiciary Committee introduces a bill or we have someone introduce our own on our behalf. So we are prepared to bring our own material and introduce it. I just wanted to let you know that.
But don't you anticipate there will be a number of bills dealing with this since it's been in the news, so...
Absolutely. And in anticipation of that, we've already set up a meeting in harmony with the League of Nebraska Municipalities with Senator Les Siler, who we anticipate to be the new Chair of Judiciary in early December, and at that time, he's invited us to bring our ideas to him, so...
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Jaram.
Yes, and these are all worthy ideas. I just wonder at what point with 70, 71, 73, there was one more I saw here, another introduction, it might have been 77, with all these introductions, does it not make more sense, because we know they're going to be introduced, that we strategically go to support? Because if it's determined that we want all of these things introduced, we may be given the Hobson's Choice or the, you know, where we have to pick, where we don't want to pick, but we can support other senators. Would you come up, Jack, and maybe explain?
Yes, Jack Chaloha, City Lobbyist. Absolutely. I think we are highly confident that there's going to be bills introduced on the topic. To make it more manageable, I think I'm comfortable with you changing the language to support of introduced, but that's up to you. I mean, either way, I have the ability to manage the bill and to express our opinion.
Maybe we could say this, maybe we, today, we say, we pass it as it's written, but give our lobbyists and the administration the flexibility to convert to a support role if we see that what we want is addressed in the legislation. That way, we don't have to, you have up until, when is it, the bill introduction date, January 15?
Yeah, the first 10 working days of the session, it'd be roughly about January 23rd or so.
All right. So you have up until that time.
Right.
If we have that understanding, I'm comfortable with voting in favor of these, but I'm afraid that we're going to, you're going to get cast in a position that is unenviable if we're saying, boy, your wish list for introductions is huge, and just listening to what Councilman Thompson said earlier is another reason why I withdrew 69, but...
Okay. I think that's true. I think that's true of really any of the ones, that from a practical standpoint, we're introducing, if our lobbyist sees one, get introduced, and it's one we support, then we can support in that respect. But I agree that for today, it's important to support this one as it's written. I think the city council unanimously supported this last time, and hopefully, we'll do that again today. Mr. Gurnat.
Thank you, Mr. President. I support a support or I support an introduction, speaking as a recent victim of a crime. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on this?
Second.
Motion, a second. Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Adopted, seven to zero. Item 71, resolution legislative package shall include proposal to require intense supervised release for all inmates, especially those who complete their court-ordered sentences without parole.
Public hearing number 71 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
71 is adopted, seven to zero. Item 72, resolution legislative package shall support for legislation if introduced to declare a state of emergency and provide funding for local governments to develop a control plan for infestation of Emerald Ash Bore.
Public hearing number 72 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, thank you. Jack, if you could come back up?
Jack Chaloha, City Lobbyist.
When I was on the Law Committee, I always had the inside, you know, story on all of these. Could you just show me or tell me, what do we do now?
If you don't mind, I may defer to your Parks Director, Brooke Bench.
Okay.
Maybe he could give us a little insight on this and as to the immediate threat that's headed our way.
What do we do now, and how would this make it so much better?
Currently, our Forestry Department has been working on a plan for the last three years. Brooke Bench, Parks and Recreation Director, for the last three years on preparing for the Emerald Ash Bore that is working its way across Iowa right now. It is currently, has been found in Kansas City and also in Colorado, and it's about 45 miles away to the east of us in Iowa. What this would help with would be for funding down the road. It currently is not here yet, but it is, we feel inevitable, and we're just getting a plan in place to help with the funding because this will impact tens of thousands of trees in the Omaha and Omaha area, and then also all across Nebraska. So we're just trying to get a plan in place and for additional funding because it's going to be very costly to help with fighting this when it gets here.
This isn't our first infestation, is it? What was the last one that we had?
No, we had a lot of issues with pine wilt, which we are still dealing with, with the Scotch pines, that we're losing all those across the state of Nebraska also.
So in the past, we didn't get any help?
No, that is correct, but this, the Dutch elm disease killed about 3 billion trees when that happened in the 70s.
Uh-huh.
The Emerald Ash Bore is on pace to kill 10 billion trees across the country.
Okay.
And this is going to affect a lot more trees than what the Scotch pine or the pine wilt had affected.
Okay. Thank you. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you. I would add too, on the Parks Committee, about a year ago, Mr. Bench brought in a group of students from Omaha North High School. They did a real nice job of researching this issue for us and giving us a great presentation on it, and it was pretty convincing, just as Mr. Bench just described, how big a deal this can be for our community, and in a bad way, the tens of thousands of trees, which I think was the equivalent of maybe 10 or 15 percent of our entire tree canopy. To me, that's very concerning, too, and hopefully, we can raise the profile of this issue and get some assistance in dealing with this so we don't see those negative effects on, throughout the city and throughout the state.
Motion, a second.
Now for the lights, motion, a second. Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
72 is adopted, seven to zero. Item 73, resolution legislative package shall include a proposal to change law on the requirements for peace officers to investigate and report on property damage motor vehicle accidents if the estimated damage exceeds $5,000 to the property of any one person.
Public hearing number 73 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Mr. Jaram.
Yes. Just given how the last time this was introduced in the legislature, that it, how it went over, and given the priorities of 70 and 71, it's my humble opinion that our ask list has grown to the point where maybe it'd be best to hold this off till next year, and so I would not withdraw it, but just place it on file.
Second.
Motion, a second. Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Placed on file, seven to zero. Item number 74, resolution that legislative package shall include proposal to allow creation of limited purpose SID inside the city limits to allow for the development by increasing the tax levy within the new SID for the sole purpose of infrastructure costs related to the development.
Public hearing number 74 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Yeah.
Mr. Thompson.
The everyday common citizen may be able to kind of grasp what this is doing, but I think we need an explanation from probably city finance as to why this is needed and how advantageous it can be. We need to put that on the record, I think. Mr. Curtis.
Steve Curtis, City Finance. This mechanism will help, I'm assuming we're talking about 74?
Yes.
This mechanism will help development in the, inside the city limits where they can't today necessarily without a lot of hoopla, try to get together and put together a taxing authority that can actually do this sort of development. So it gives the city the ability, or anybody that has property inside the city, the ability to organize an SID-like structure and then put that taxing authority in place so they can issue bonds, which they wouldn't be able to do currently.
Is there widespread support out in the developmental community and just the community in general?
I don't know if I'd characterize it as widespread support. I think they would be more in favor currently of not annexing these areas. However, if an area is already inside the city limits, I think they'd be very supportive.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Ms. Milton.
A similar question, but I was just curious as to, could you, would this be for somebody that's already annexed and then they can still have SID funding?
Correct.
But I mean, give me, could you give me an example of how that would work? Is that for development, or are we looking more specifically at...
Steve Curtis, City Finance. I mean, example would be, for instance, if Miracle Hills were to come inside, this would allow them, and I'll just use as an example, because there are other areas like that, such as the one in northeast Harrison that recently was annexed. This would allow a developer to put together a development-like, SID-like organization that could then issue bonds and then put that obligation on each property holder. There are other avenues being investigated, but I don't think anything would be quite as clean, or this may clarify a lot of those inconsistencies that are currently in law so that it's a lot easier to put together an SID-like entity and then go forward with development, just like an entity outside the city limits could do today.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, this one's of interest to me, from an economic development perspective. I mean, I think another example might have been Sterling Ridge. There was some conversation at that time about, could a mechanism like this have been helpful to what they were trying to do? But obviously, it wasn't allowed in state law. So I think there's some benefit to that when we talk about, we need more tools as a city to encourage development other than just TIF. But, so I'm supportive of that notion and supportive of what this does, but I leave open the question as to whether it's probable this would get done and should this be on the top of the list as we were, as we've talked about with the rest of these two. Any further lights? Mr. Gray.
This one rises to the level of maybe we place it on file, I think. I don't know that we, given what we already have here, is packages and items that we know are going to get introduced, or most likely will get introduced, I think maybe this would be, I think it'd be better in a package next year if we did that. That's what I would think. I would, I'd make a motion to place it on file.
There's a motion.
Second.
Motion, a second. Now for the lights, roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnat.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's placed on file, five to two. Item 75, resolution legislative package shall include proposal to free spending by an SID once the city notifies the SID Board of Directors of intent to annex.
Public hearing number 75 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Motion, a second. Mr. Pauls.
I just have a point of clarification. Let's say that I happen to be in an SID, because I was there at one time, in an SID, we had things planned, and then you're annexed. If they're already planned, does that escape this?
Steve Curtis, City Finance. Not necessarily. I think we'd like the opportunity to look at what the project or expenditure is to make sure it's consistent with the city plans. This wouldn't necessarily say no, and in many cases, an SID is going to do something that we'd agree with anyway. But if they were headed down the path with something we didn't disagree with or we didn't see as valuable, we might question that or veto that.
So if they've already voted on it, and as a minor community, they think they have it, this would allow the city to say, no way?
Yes, but I think it's going to be subject to the way that the legislation gets drafted.[1787.83] I mean, it may have other appeal rights and other sort of things in there.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Milton?
Well, and I just wanted to make one clarification. I don't know if anybody else got the email that I got. I can't remember if it was an email or something in the public's voice, but somebody was confused thinking that they wouldn't be able to pay for their garbage or snow removal or any of the expenditures in the normal course of business just because they've been notified. And could you just, I know that that's not true, but if you could just clarify, clarify that to anybody that's confused about what spending, what the spending means in regards to this.
Steve Curtis, City Finance. I think this would be more aimed at unusual expenditures or things that would be outside of their normal operating. So, things like snow removal and trash would all proceed, and in many cases, what have already been committed to and paid for. I think this is really getting into some last-minute items that may be inconsistent with the city's master plan.
And the, I, it's my understanding that the reason we want this is because there, there have been or could be maybe SIDs that once annexed, go and spend a bunch of money because the city would then be responsible for it. Is that, is that kind of the reason behind it, so that when we're planning, we're not getting more debt than we anticipated?
Yeah, and that's why I said I think this would be more, more aimed at unusual sort of ticket items. I think in most cases, the, the normal operating expenditures would go right through. This would be if they were going to commit to or maybe issue bonds for some large type of improvement that may in fact be inconsistent with the city's master plan. We'd like to have a chance to stall that while we all look at it and decide if that really makes sense.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. Mr. Pauls?
I thought we had a motion in a second.
I motioned you second, yeah.
All right.
And I have, and I have the floor.
Now, we have four.
Just one more question from the finance aspect. When you say a major, are you saying like putting a swimming pool in or redoing the roads? I, because I happen to have a area that's been annexed and they want to do something different, I don't want to stand in their way.
I don't know if I would, Steve Curtis, City Finance, I don't know if I'd hazard to guess what those sort of items would be. I do think that the legislature would add various appeal processes and other things. I just think we would like to have the opportunity to get involved because we'll do our analysis based on the amount of debt and other things that are there. And if they're going to make some substantial change to their situation, I think we'd like to have the opportunity to have some discussion instead of just letting it go forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gurnat. Do you want a second again?
What did you see that prompted this legislation? There must have been something. Steve?
Steve Curtis, City Finance. I don't know that we saw anything specific. I think it became clear to us that there were a lot of moving targets out there and we really had no mechanism to be involved in the conversation and that once we declared our annexation interest, that we had no opportunity to be involved in those decisions from the time we declared up until the time the annexation was complete, and it could change the complexion of that area quite a bit. And again, I don't think that we would get involved in normal operating sort of decisions or if they had a master plan-like situation that was actually consistent with our master plan, I don't know that we would stand in the way because it would be something we'd have to do anyway. I think this would be more out of the ordinary kind of expenditures. We wouldn't have a chance to be involved in that.
So, if they, they had something in their plans and there was, let's just say there was $100,000 there that was, was left over, or let's say a million dollars, and they wanted to spend 900,000 of it to have, go from brass doorknobs to solid gold doorknobs. That would be something that you'd have a little bit of concern about in some of the facilities that we may be taking over in an annexation.
Steve Curtis, City Finance. Yeah, I think that's, examples like that, that while that may not be exactly what you're made of what we might run across, it's those sorts of things where we at least want to be involved in that discussion because it may be inconsistent with where we normally see an area like that go.
But you want to be part of that balance system when the dialogue continues with this at the state level and then if passed, that the nuts and the bolts will be in there so that tool will be available for our annexation review process here in the city, correct?
Well, yes, and it does give us a chance to see what's going to be there and understand as it changes from the time we declare the area until the annexation is complete.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. There is two motions in two seconds.
One third.
Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Milton?
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
75 is adopted, seven to zero. Item 76, resolution legislative package shall include a proposal to provide Nebraska municipalities with greater flexibility to meet the mandates of the Federal Clean Water Act to authorize Nebraska Department of Economic Quality, Environmental Quality, consider both the financial capacity, capability of the community and the cost to benefit ratio of strict compliance with regulations.
Public hearing number 76 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Thompson?
Yes, Public Works.
Good afternoon, Marty Gray, Public Works Department.
Marty, several weeks ago, I had asked you at the same podium, was there a Plan B? And you talked about even though we had to go and, you know, do our rate, our hike of our, of our rates, that you wanted to go back to governmental agencies and say, take a second look at it.
Right.
And that the ability to pay should be considered more than what it is currently. Is that the reason for this particular, could you elaborate a little bit more?
Yeah, essentially, this is to provide our regulators, the people that tell us what we have to do, to actually arm them with more options and what they can allow us to do, to introduce more logic in it, to talk about cost and benefit, not just rote numbers that we have to meet. This legislation was kind of inspired by a law that was enacted in the state of Missouri. That bill that they deliberated on down there focused more on making it difficult for the regulatory authority to impose new permit limits. They had to essentially prove that the community could afford it before they could pass it. And it set a very antagonistic relationship between the municipalities and the state. We want to take a different approach. We know that our state regulatory authorities up through the governor's office want to see Omaha and the other communities in the state thrive. It's not just an Omaha bill. Proportionally, some of the smaller communities out west with declining populations and aging infrastructure are facing the same kind of challenges we are. The intent of this legislation would be just to allow the NDEQ to avow themselves of some of the more liberal policies that are now floating around amongst EPA themselves. So, it's really more of an enabling, encouraging sort of thing than a heavy-handed request.
And it gives taxpayers hope for the future that the dire, you know, things that are coming down the road can be averted.
Yeah.
At least a possibility.
Yeah. What's advocated in, in this legislation is more of a common sense approach. We've got multiple demands upon us now and we see more on the horizon, but there is a limit, and we talked about that when we passed the rate ordinance, that at some point, it's going to become a burden on the, the city of Omaha, and it's going to hurt our economy if we keep at this pace. So, this allows us to kind of consider all of the different requirements that are either here or coming and prioritize them, then figure out at what rate can we achieve these. We want to continue to make progress. We want our environment to look good, but we don't want it to be at the expense of the economy of Omaha or the state of Nebraska.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. With that, I'll move the approval.
Second. And, Mr. Gray, would you say this is a key component of us making the argument of affordability and hardship as we continue with our plan here and before our new rate ordinance might come back to the city council?
Definitely. It's, it's a piece of the puzzle. It's a tool for us and for the regulators that are partners in this. I think it has widespread appeal. I think that this is not an urban bill. It's an urban and a rural bill. I don't think this is a partisan bill. It's not going to result in any, you know, huge investment of state or local dollars. It's just another tool to allow us to have the dialogue in a common sense sort of practical manner.
Good. I think it was a kind of unanimous sentiment that we want to make sure that's happening before we come back and have to
Sure.
deal with that again. So, I think there's a motion, a second.
I don't want to cap.
No further lights, roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
76 is adopted, seven to zero. Item 77, resolution legislative package shall include a proposal to redefine innocent third party under the vehicle pursuit statute.
Public hearing number 77 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gurnat?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mungart, would you encapsulate what you had said this morning at pre-council regarding redefining the innocent third party that's under a current vehicle pursuit statute?
Sure. Tom Mungart, Deputy City Attorney. This would tweak the current strict liability innocent third-party pursuit statute where an innocent third party who's injured as a result of a law enforcement pursuit gets to recover regardless of the wisdom of the pursuit. Now, most innocent third parties are the person driving down the street who just happens to be, happens to collide with the fleeing vehicle. But a passenger in the fleeing vehicle can also be, can also claim to be an innocent third party. And we see one or two of these a year, well, maybe not that, maybe one every two years, where somebody who's in the fleeing vehicle, either as a friend, typically as a friend of the driver, gets injured in the crash and they claim to be innocent. The current definition of what an innocent third party is is something that's created by the Supreme Court and in many instances will allow that person to recover. Well, we've seen across the, the state in some cases, well, that person is a conspirator with the driver, is there sharing in the benefit of the driver. We saw a case where the passenger was in fact holding the drugs that the driver and he were going to use later on. People who would benefit from getting away from police or people who've made bad choices in getting in with a drunk driver, for example. Those people are, have been within the Supreme Court definition called innocent third parties. We don't think that that's the idea behind the strict liability statute, that people who are either benefiting from the flight or who used bad judgment in getting involved in the flight should be paid by the taxpayers. And this would tweak that, that innocent third-party definition so that they could not recover.
Have we been down this road before?
This would be a repeat of a bill that was introduced last year and did not get out of Judiciary Committee.
And if I'm listening to you correctly, this tweaking is a little bit different than what we have pursued, no pun intended, before going down this road?
Yes. Last year was the first time that, that anybody really tried to adjust the definition of innocent third party. And I would emphasize that this change, if adopted, would not impact the vast majority of people who are injured in pursuits because they're the person who's driving down the street who simply gets involved in a collision with the fleeing person. So, this would actually affect a very small number of people who claim to be innocent third parties.
Thank you. I'll yield at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Milton?
Thank you. And actually, I just, Councilman Gurnat, I want to thank you for bringing this up again. I do think that this is very important and I, I don't think that, that somebody who is going to be benefiting from the driver or the crime in which they're escaping should actually benefit from, from the strict liability. So, I, I absolutely think that we need to introduce legislation, really just redefining the meaning of innocent third party. So, a true innocent third party does still collect. So, I, again, I want to thank you for bringing this up again.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Yes, Mr. Mungart, just for the record, when, when we say redefine, we mean make it a higher standard to prove that you were innocent, right?
Yes. That would be, the, the bill as drafted would specify specific instances when you would not be innocent third party. And basically, you would have, the, the passenger would have the burden of showing that they neither promoted the pursuit, didn't know the pursuit was going to happen, had no reason to benefit from the pursuit, was just simply a passenger in the car and was really in no different situation than another driver driving down the street. It just happened and they were in the wrong place at the wrong time.
Thank you.
But most importantly, it would make them prove it rather than forcing the city to prove it.
To have to prove it.
Because all of the evidence is in their possession because you're talking about what happened inside that car.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. Motion to approve. Second. Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
77 is adopted, seven to zero. Item 78, resolution that pursuant to the recommendations of Law Committee. The city lobbyist, Jack Chalhaw, is hereby designated as the official lobbyist of the city of Omaha.
Public hearing.
You couldn't go without this Jack, or?
Do you still want the job, Jack? Public hearing on number 78 is today. Proponents, please?
Jack Chalhaw, city lobbyist, I'd like to ask for your approval on this resolution. Although it seems perfunctory, it is important for you as a legislative body to, to pass this. It gives me authority to go to all of your city departments and ask for assistance, get data from them, even inquire and sometimes ask directors to come down and provide testimony before the legislature. I've had in my, this is my 21st year preparing to represent the city of Omaha, I've had state senators ask me for my credentials before, and I've offered them this resolution, which, as you know, is official and Buster will give me that emblazed stamp, maybe if I ask nicely. But I just wanted to let you know that I appreciate this and that it does give me full authority to represent you and the city of Omaha. And finally, if I may, before I sit down, I just wanted to thank you for all of your engagement on our state legislative plan. Like I said, I've gone through this 21 times now, and to me, it stands out as one of the most engaging group of issues that we've had. I know all of the council members offered ideas, the mayor's office, the cabinet officials essentially offered their input, and so I feel good about the fact that we're pretty organized here and, and we're going to march down to Lincoln with one voice and, and work for the best interest of our people. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Pauls?
Thank you, Mr. President. Jack, I just had a brief conversation.
Yes, sir. Jack Chalhaw, city lobbyist.
The, the thing I'd like to get across, when you go down there, you know there's so many bills that, that you can advance. Give me an example of one of the speakers, what, if you can recall in your past.
Oh, in terms of the engagement I've had with them?
Yeah, and how do they tell you how many bills?
Oh.
Give me an example.
Well, through the years, I've had speakers come up to me and, and we'll put our legislative package in a nice list and, and do one lines, if you will, and I've handed it to speakers and had meetings and, and they'll go, oh, Jack, this is, this is a nice list, thank you, but which one do you want? And I'll come back and say, oh, Senator, these are all important. The city of Omaha needs this, this, and they stop me and say, which one do you want? And, and so, I mean, I don't think we ever need to get down to one issue because there's a multitude of issues that affect Omaha and our people, but, but a lot of times, they do ask for that focus and they want us to, you know, even though I'm a professional and well-dressed beggar, I, I need to really focus on what we're asking for, so.
Yeah, so they do set some guidelines.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
ask for that focus and they want us to, you know, even though I'm a professional and well-dressed beggar, I need to really focus on what we're asking for, so.
Yeah, so they do set some guidelines.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would say also a thank you to Chairman Pauls and the Law Committee for going through all these proposals and weaving through them and giving us their recommendations and what results they did today. Mr. Thompson.
One more time, Jack.
Jack Chalhaw, City Lobbyist.
It's good to know that, quote unquote, "You ain't too proud to beg."
That's absolutely true.
I like that.
And really, that's how one of my former bosses who lobbied for years and years phrased what we do for a living, is he grabbed his coat tails and said, "We're well-dressed beggars because we're there asking for the senators to help us and pass legislation on our behalf," so.
In the past, we've tried to sell this by going down to Lincoln. Couple of times, we brought them up here. Maybe once or twice, we just sent you with the message, but we didn't back you up by going, you know, physically. Does any of that help? Have we talked about that yet?
Right. No, I think it absolutely does help. And this year, upcoming year for 2015, we've started with a couple of formal lunches that we plan to host. The mayor plans to host one on January 23rd down in Lincoln, and that'll be early in the session. And through coordination with your council president, the city council will host another one in March, once the session's kind of started up and is really moving along and we know what the priorities are, and we'll be able to have a lot more face-to-face for not only me, but through our elected officials with the 49 state senators as well. And one last thing, Councilmember Thompson, is 2015 will be somewhat unique again. We're going to have a minimum now of 18 new faces down at the legislature, who have a new governor, a lot of new people on his staff and cabinet, and so it'll be crucial to, once again, build those relationships.
Are they more impressed when they, when we bring them here or when we go there?
Well, I think they like to have meetings, if you will, or engagement on their home turf, or at least they see Lincoln as that, so we'll do that and make it work to our advantage, hopefully.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. There's a motion on this, right?
No. Motion approved.
Motion, second. Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
78 is adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda items 79 through 80 shall be held on third reading, ordinance on second reading. Item 81, ordinance declaring necessity appropriating property located at 27th and Lake Street for subsequent use as a site for implementation of the Consolidated Action Plan.
Public hearing on number 81 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 82, ordinance proving contract with the BKD to approve and execute an independent annual audit agreement.
Public hearing on number 82 is today. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. I'm Robyn DeVore, Audit Partner with BKD, 1120 South 101st Street, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 83, ordinance proving a contract between Omaha Convention and Visitors Bureau and Simple View for three years for tourism-specific content management, sales solution, and hosting.
Public hearing on number 83 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 84, ordinance proving extension of existing agreement with Swanson Russell for advertising and marketing services for the Omaha Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Public hearing on number 84 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 85, special ordinance allowing special tax and assessment on lots and pieces of real estate within Benson Business Improvement District 6875 for work in the 2014 calendar year.
Public hearing on number 85 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item 86, special ordinance allowing special tax and assessment on lots and pieces of real estate within Dundee Business Improvement District, number 6876, for work performed in the 2014 calendar year.
Public hearing on number 86 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Pursuant City Council Rule 7C, the public hearing on agenda items number 87 through 98 shall be held on a second reading.
Roll call.
Thompson.
Yes.
Garnett.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
355.
.....................